We are now live, hopefully the audio works.
All right, time is now three thirty seven, September fourteenth, the Select Board Work Session. To cover the policies for the personnel. And the recommendations that have been given to us by the committee. So Dana, would you like to walk us through some of them and? How do you folks want to do this? Do you wanna like yay or nay each thing as we go through it? So we just kind of get most of it out of the way and then maybe if there's something we discussed, then we discuss it, but. Or do you wanna kinda go through the whole thing and then up and down vote it?
Why don't I just go to the sections with the suggested change?
Please.
Yes, right.
And then, and some of it is, is housekeeping things.
I noticed.
Nothing too exciting.
I noticed, accommodation.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So much for that.
Yeah. So, so how about I just start then with, um, why don't we skip over hypo type stuff? And just say, yeah, fix that. And anything that's actually a substantive change, we'll cover that.
Are you ready?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, I need to interrupt you every time.
So the first one is on page, starts on four, but the change is on five. It's just the description, talks about the job anniversary. We added for full and part time. And then supervisors, department heads, and so we've listed the department head. And I will keep going. Or stop me, stop me whenever you want me to. The open door policy. We tried, what that, the goal of that was to kind of get down in writing what the procedure is when you wanna talk to someone. Basically, the employee's immediate supervisor needs to know it first, and then the department head, then me. And finally, if all else fails, make an appointment with the Select Board.
That's fantastic.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that matches the, uh, policy that we have on like harassment or whatever.
Yes, it does.
Nice they match.
Which is unusual, yeah. It's unusual, we're consistent. Unit operating rules. A lot of that was a concern brought by the Police Department and the fact that they have different rules than what we might have in the town office. So we have specified that in writing.
That's good. Is there a certain rule that sticks out that's much different than what would happen here?
I guess the, the, I think the key takeaway from that is that there are standard operating procedures at the Police Department that may differ from.
Okay.
That may differ from this.
So the last line in that then would be a problem. Which is where conflicts may arise, the policies and procedures contained in this document will prevail. Which would mean that even if they have different policies and procedures, it doesn't matter.
You know, I think you pointed that out at the meeting, I was gonna take that out. So do you think that should be removed?
I think if we're trying to say that they can have different ones, then it has to be. Maybe we, maybe instead of where conflicts may arise, uh, maybe it, and this prevails, maybe it's that they can only be more stringent. Or something of that nature. I'm, I'm not sure the particular wording based on the way that the policies.
So are you saying that, in other words, they should follow the more stringent rules rather than the less stringent?
Yeah, the more stringent or more specific rules.
Okay, I don't know how to word that right now, but I, I.
You don't want them to.
I'll read.
I think I know what you're saying where.
Yeah, cause like if, if this says, you know, we've got a privacy policy and their thing is better. We don't want someone to say, well, it doesn't matter, there's, it doesn't matter because of this, so you have to show it to us.
The SOP is probably more stringent than ours. Okay, employment and relatives, I just corrected typo. Hire date. That refers to both full-time and part-time employees. If the employee transfers from a part-time position to a full-time, the transfer date will apply in the calculation of benefits. And we just had that come up, so that's.
Yeah.
Made us aware of that. The next is the holidays. And sorry, things are hells or skele here, but it was President's Day we were trying to add.
We're trying to add or we have added?
You haven't added yet, but it's suggested that.
It's added in the draft.
It's suggested that you add it.
How do we feel about that?
I mean, I think it's a standard.
In a situation like this.
Holiday.
I think it's a standard government holiday. So to me, it makes sense.
Yeah. Can't vary from normal.
I will say, in days that we've worked, that has been a holiday like this, we don't have any business.
Well, right.
Nobody, nobody comes in.
I shouldn't be there either.
You know.
So how, let's see. Trying to read the number changes here, so it ends up with twelve?
Twelve.
Okay.
I'm not drawing my voice. We're getting live.
Oh dear, I'm not drawing there.
I know.
So the difference with government.
New employee turns to a paid personal day after the first anniversary of hire.
That's nice.
In other words, you have a new employee come in and then the second day of your job, he wants a day off.
And paid.
Next is talking about the number of hours per week, how the vacation time is scheduled. In other words, it's trying to keep the, based on the same hours, it's called for a schedule. If your schedule is forty hours a week.
I'm leaving, I don't mean to interrupt your meeting. Personnel plan, people first, stuff second.
You know, was it, was it something we said, you're welcome to join us?
No, you don't need my input.
Sure we do. Have a nice day.
Bye, Robin.
I like him, he's so much fun.
And then the other, I'm sorry, I got a little sidetracked here. We're talking about part-time employees being eligible for prorated vacation based on their part-time work schedule. And that is new, that is not something we have. The committee talked a little bit about paid days off versus vacation and sick. And so forth, which there's a lot of merits to that, but they didn't recommend that, so.
So what are the, I'm, I'm trying to scan through quickly and maybe it's there and I'm just not seeing it yet. But what are the limitations for the prorated vacation for part-time? Like is the, what if you only work like three or five hours a week or whatever?
If you worked five hours a week, for example, you would be eligible for five hours vacation. For the week, yeah.
Oh, okay, so you, you mean for when you're cashing it in?
Right, well.
So how, how does it accrue basically? Is it still?
You're talking about if they leave employment, how much they're paid or?
So like if I'm working, say I work five hours a week is, I don't know, I have no idea how much they're, what the time is for it, but let's say I'm, I'm the janitor. Not to pick on her, but let's say it's five hours or ten hours a week, whatever it is. Is that purely one eighth or, uh, one fourth the accrual, or is there a scale that, or is there a minimum for being able to accrue vacation time?
I'm sorry, I'm still not, I'm not, I'm not following you Dave.
So being prorated is based on the standard forty hour schedule, correct?
It's, I guess it's, the prorated in that case is strictly based on their normal work schedule.
So if they're working five hours, well, let's say ten hours a week, cause it's easier math, I think. So let's say they're working ten hours a week. And in this thing, it's showing that for the first year, they get five days a year. How is that math done? Like are they, are they still getting the one-fourth of that? So like a day and a quarter of time that they can use during the year? So then they could actually be out, what, two, two days-ish? Or are they, uh, or is there a lower limit where like you have to be working at least fifteen hours a week or twenty hours a week before this kicks in?
No, I think there is no lower limit and, and I'm gonna say this back to you and I'm hoping I'm answering your question. The amount of time that they're entitled to is based, hours, is based on the hours that they work. This chart that is below, I think we could, it incorporates the years of continuous service. So in other words, if someone worked ten hours a week and they were here between zero to one year, they would get ten hours if they chose to do so.
So if you're part-time under, well usually part-time is under what, thirty?
Yeah, thirty something hours, yeah.
You get sick pay.
No, this is vacation.
Or vacation, I'm sorry.
Did I answer that well or not?
That's, that's what's always been here?
No, part-times don't get any benefits.
I think this is perhaps a lot of overhead for a lot of the small bits and pieces. Cause if someone's working five hours a week, for example, or three hours or whatever it is, I can't, I can't see why quote vacation matters because you're like.
You're on vacation.
If you're not able, if you're not gonna be there, you're just gonna say you're not gonna be there and work a different day or something. Or, or put it off for a week.
I'm looking at it where you work ten hours a week and this week you're going on vac, you, you're doing something else. And that's, then you'd have your vacation and get paid. It's not like, they also, I understand what you're saying, they also can, at times can say, I'm not gonna be working this week and vacation wouldn't come into play, they just wouldn't be paid.
I also think he's talking about, well, I'm not putting yours in your mouth, but the, the cost to, we all know vacation is, well.
But your exposure is really with the Police Department.
Cause of production in a sense, because they have to fill that spot.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna have to, yes, yeah, they're gonna have to.
Cause it is, I mean, they even, like even on a, granted, in, in the town setting, I suppose it's a little different, but on a, on a production side, you know, you're paying somebody to not produce anything. I mean, same thing here, you're paying somebody not to produce the work, but is that gonna make something, is that gonna affect the bottom line? Like when you don't get that extra load in or whatever? But where it would affect would could be that, uh, the job doesn't get done, but that's not really a concern here on a part-time person.
Yeah, and, and normally, like, the point of vacation is to allow someone to refresh so that they can come back and do the job correctly. And if you're only working five hours a week, time away from the, from the job for a week, whether you're paid or not, isn't gonna change how refreshed you are to be able to do the job.
I, you know, as I say, I think the exposure's in the Police Department. Because there's a case that that empty shift has to be filled by somebody. So now you're paying two people for the same shift. So that's, you know, and this, this point I made at the committee, but, um, this is, that is a consideration. The other part of it that we discussed was, it's very hard to get part-time people. Sorry to get anyone there, but, but it's difficult to fill part-time positions. And it's a character. But I agree with Dave, I mean, really, if you work five hours a week, I mean, it's, it's not gonna make a break.
At least you could do more of like a, you know. Like a reward type thing because you're rewarding the person. I know vacation is a little bit of that, but I, I'll see, resting. Cause the point of it being hard to get people isn't going to be forever.
This is true.
So, so what? Well, I know, I was just talking to somebody about fuel and then energy, energy's not gonna be stupid, I don't think, forever either. You might disagree, but they're gonna figure out how to get natural gas again, trust me. You know what I mean? So there's some, but more or less times are not gonna be like this all the time. And what, once you set the presidents, you're kinda stuck with that. It's harder to take it away than to give it.
And I don't disagree with you. I, I mean, I will say that Webster, there, I mean, Webster's a unique place. And I think unless you have a citizen in town that wants to do a part-time job, it's difficult to get people, even if it's better, you know.
Are, are we, um, I know currently we don't provide, uh, other benefits for part-time. Is that also covered in here and is that getting added as well?
No.
I mean, is there gonna be other things coming along?
Right, so for example, when, when it's a part-time person that's, say, twenty hours a week or something like that, are we offering prorated portions of, uh, for example, health insurance?
Well, that would be.
Cause I think that would be a better way to do this, and I don't think it makes sense to give them the vacation time if we're not saying that they're worth insuring and, and helping pitch in for insurance.
I don't think we addressed that, readily bear with me a moment.
I'd be much more inclined to offer prorated insurance to part-time people above, say, fifteen or twenty hours a week. Cause that, that would, that would seem to be far more beneficial.
But the insurance companies, would they go for that too? I mean, I'm, I'm not insurance at all.
As long as it's getting paid, they, they won't care.
Pardon?
As long as the insurance company gets paid, they don't care. I mean, the, the downside is that you could get into a situation, um, where, and maybe this then becomes more fine tuning of where the policy portion is. But you could get into a situation where if someone's working that minimum of fifteen or twenty hours a week, they're not actually making enough to cover the percentage that would be for the insurance. So then they would actually have to pay you to work there to get their, that insurance. We don't wanna be in that situation.
Yeah, no, right.
Well, that was my concern, because even if they're working.
I'm sure we could find like a.
Which they're still gonna have to pay, um, a significant amount for the health insurance.
Correct.
And, you know, when we get the health insurance bill, which we usually get the previous month. If we had a situation where the employee got behind or did not pay, we can't cancel them immediately to get them off the, get them off the record. And I'm not saying, I think that we have good employees and they wouldn't stick us with it, but, um, you know, it could happen. I mean, I've seen it happen on not health insurance, but other, other issues.
Yeah, and, and I think there, there are ways to deal with that and if we, if we want to deal with that, the, the way to do it, I think, would be to look at as long as what they make on average per month or week or whatever is, or per pay period, will cover what their percentage portion prorated would be. So at, at least they're not having to pay us. Then I, I think that would be like that minimum threshold. And I don't, that's probably not hours based, because it's gonna be very variable depending on position and how much they would make. But I think there's a way to, to do that, if, if we're inclined to do that.
We don't know what the difference in cost is of offering insurance via, via vacation.
Well, it depends on percentages, right?
Well, yes, and we know there must be a chart for that, but what, we know.
So right now, it's, because it's all full-time people, it's what, eighty-twenty? Or is it seventy-five, twenty-five?
It's eighty-five, fifteen.
Eighty-five, fifteen?
Yeah.
Oh wow, we're really nice.
That's pretty good.
Can I say something before we get further into it? Health trusts will not give health insurance to anybody that is not full-time. And they consider full-time thirty-five to forty hours. I only know that because I've looked into it before, when there was an offer attempted to be made to somebody that desperately needed health insurance. But they won't insure, it's the same thing with short-term disability. You have to work a minimum of twenty hours a week in order to qualify for short-term disability.
Wendy, wasn't, was that, was that recent?
Well, I left in twenty nineteen, so it was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
The only reason I say that is I know in the last couple of years, some of that, but, but I don't know the health trust.
Well, we obviously would have to check with them.
Yeah, that, that would be a question for them, because I know some things have changed. I can't remember why.
And all that has changed a lot in some things, I mean.
Right.
You know, but I'm fairly sure with the health insurance, because it's so costly to begin with, that that was one of the reasons they required, um, people to be full, full-time.
On the, on the vacation for part-time, I think what you're saying is, somebody works five hours, they get a week paid five hours. Somebody works twenty hours, they get one week paid twenty hours. Does it go more than one week?
Yeah, after the first year of service, yes, then it goes to three weeks.
Boy, no, that's pretty good, three weeks of vacation after one year?
What if? I was thinking, what if we said part-time service is different than full-time service?
Well, that's where we can adjust the, maybe instead of evenly, it's half or whatever, like we can adjust those things.
I mean, you might not have to go by the same.
I know overall, maybe cheaper to sense in the town way.
You might not have to go by the same.
Yeah.
You know, schematic that.
It would just, I would have, I think, I feel like, even though, don't, anybody take, whoever, part-time, don't take that wrong, I just, I think somebody might look at it as, as full-time, they have to put their thirty-five hours in to earn their thirty-five hours. And like Dave was saying, because of being part-time, you know, the, the time there, you know, here is so little to begin with. Feels hard to sell. In my mind.
Well, because there's so many variables, that's, that's the, that's the thing, I mean, so if you're tying it, if you have someone that's part-time and they've worked here more than ten years, and they work ten hours a week, does that mean they get?
Five weeks' worth of vacation.
Five weeks' worth of, yeah. And I don't think that would be an issue, yeah.
In many time, like, maybe not for the police, but for all of the other part-time positions, I don't know that we could actually afford to allow a part-time person to be gone for five weeks. Because usually they're the only ones doing it, which is because it's only a s- part-time position. As opposed to, it's an extra part-time to help. You know, like if, it would be fine, for example, for police, because they would have another officer covering. If it were, say, the.
Like the paid.
Assistant town clerk that we don't have, that would be fine, because they would just be scheduling coverage between them. But, for example, if it were Wendy or the janitor or something of that nature, or the snow shoveler, whoever we don't have that does that at some point. Those, those positions, like you can't say, well, you know, it's snow, I'm taking my vacation this week.
Right.
It, it, it puts the town in a really hard spot to do that.
So vacation, I mean, the department head really approves vacation. So if you're saying, you know, obviously the department has responsibilities to make sure there's coverage. So if.
But we also don't wanna put the department head in a situation where your employee is owed vacation, but you can't ever get it to them.
That's true. That's true, and you know.
But none of it's fun.
Yeah.
Not to do, what I meant by that is that's the, that's, you know, you, you, everybody wants somebody to take a vacation, but like, oh crap, who's gonna do that while they're going, cause there's.
Now I have another thing to throw in. Can somebody, is it in our policy that they can just take five weeks off at a time? Or is it like one week or two weeks?
The, as far as I know, what's in the policy is that it's based on these, their, whoever they report to, making sure that there is adequate coverage and it's okay at that point in time. So maybe they could take five weeks, five weeks off, uh, if it's, say, a police officer and there's other coverage. Maybe they couldn't if, you know, it's somebody else, so.
Okay, just a question.
Five weeks is hard to fill in any way you look at it.
Well, you know, I think it would be.
Unless you've got all of the officers to do it, like, it makes sense for them, but not for anywhere else, really.
But five weeks is a lot of vacation time, that's for sure.
Well, it would be a problem, I mean, if Russ or I took five weeks off.
Absolutely.
You know, I think. And it would be a problem when he took five weeks off.
Right.
But on that, do we ever suggest that we, they can take a pay and, you know, not take a week, a five weeks? Or not just, you know, maybe take two weeks and then get paid for three weeks or something like that?
Well, a lot of tech companies do that, but their goal is to.
Retain them.
Just make sure that people are continuing to work as opposed, and as opposed to trying to keep them healthy. And I'm, I'm of the mindset that it's better to have a slightly higher salary or a better benefits package and a little bit less time, and then encourage them to actually use all of it.
You mean, don't make it unusable?
Yeah.
Meaning, 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 here you got five, but here, we'll pay you for two.
Yeah, you can only use three, but we'll pay you for two. Well, then just make it a better pay so that everybody knows exactly what to expect. And there's no misgivings, no, no weirdness, it, it just works.
How did we come up with five, five weeks? Has that, has that inside of them?
It shows that it always has been.
It has been, yeah.
So that'd be something we would be changing.
The only one that has, the only one that is shown as changed in the chart is for the one to five years of service, which, uh, looks like it has changed, is it changed from nine to fifteen, or is it changed from nineteen to fifteen? Oh wait, no, that was a ten, so it changed from ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen.
So from two to three weeks in that one to five year service period.
One to five has gone from one to two weeks.
Uh, from two to three.
Two or three.
Oh. And that's a change?
Yes.
Yeah.
I feel that's too soon.
Yeah, I, so as much as I think that the three weeks is definitely more appropriate in the like four and five-year range, maybe we add another section to the chart. So that zero to one stays the five, but then one to two or one to three is ten. So it's, now you're two weeks after you've passed your year. And then at either, let's say, three or four, un- until through the five, that's where you get your three weeks. That kind of matches up with the way that the rest of the chart goes with, you know, from five to ten is four, and then ten plus is five.
Doesn't solve our part-time problem, though.
No, it doesn't change the part-time portion.
So are you making that a recommendation that we're gonna vote on?
Well, I'm discussing options, because I, I'm I'm not trying to shove a
No, 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 I don't mean that, but I mean, I'm, that's why I'm just writing.
I think he's discussing the, um,
Yeah, the year chart.
Rules for full-time employees, yeah.
No, no, I know that.
Because we ended up getting to that, so.
Cause he's just changing, cause he's just changing it a little bit, adding a little, another line.
Adding a section.
So sure, what what are, what are your comments on the differences in the years? Cause you were saying that that sounded really, really generous and, you know, coming from tech, most tech places start you at two two weeks, but you either need to make it to three or five years before you get to three, so.
Well, I'm not in the working roles, really, so it's.
Well, and mine's aren't realistic. I I I know that, but I also like, huh. My brain just says money, but. I guess that would be a compromise.
A what?
A compromise.
Compromise.
So, so what num- do you, A, do you, do both of you like adding the extra tier for some number of years between the one and five?
I feel like I'm compromising by doing that in my mind.
So what are you thinking that it should be?
Just what you said, what you do, I just think zero to one is your, is your two weeks.
That's one.
One, right, one to five is two weeks, right, you said?
That's what it has been.
And they wanted to change it to three.
Correct.
I would like to leave it for two. But if, if you guys go to the fact, well, hey, yeah, that's what I, right, that's what I, that's I think at least what they, you get the first year, so, so zero to one, so I start here, sorry, I might wanna be numb about this, but that's because you, people cut me out too late. If I started tomorrow, I'm eligible and I work a couple days, I'm eligible for a week before I make it to the year. Okay, it's good to hear.
But by the end of the year, you will have accrued a week.
One week, okay, okay, okay. And then, so let's keep going, just to make sure that I'm not crazy. Then, I'm now in my second year, I have to make it all the way to the end of my second year to accrue another week.
So, no, so during that second year.
Oh, that's where you get your week.
You're accruing double, so now you will have accrued a week by half of the year, then you'll accrue a second week through the second half of the year.
When I'm, when I'm in my second, when I'm in my second.
During your second year, through your fifth year.
If you look on the chart, it says monthly accrual, which is a percentage and does relate to the days, so in other words, you have a monthly accrual of point four-two days, four-two hours. Days or hours, I always get that mixed up. That makes the five days per year. I think it's hours.
Sounds.
Yeah. And and if you notice, the next section changes.
Go ahead, Dave.
Who is what?
Dee.
So, I mean.
Anyone knows? And he's like, all of it, no.
So I guess, Marlo, you're saying that you are not in favor of going to three weeks on the second year?
Yes, I am. I'd like it to stay the same.
You would like it to stay the same, the one to five, two weeks?
Yes.
So, okay.
Okay, I said it.
I could go with that.
I'm trying to think of a way that kind of makes sense in here, and I think the, I think what's throwing it is the way that it's arbitrarily, well, not arbitrarily, but that it's done as five-year chunks. And so you've got this like, yeah, there's a year, and then you like immediately get a whole lot. And then that's good through five years, then you get a bit more, and that's good for the next five years. Then you get a little bit more again for the rest of it. And so it seems like it's, there's a snap where like, there's just a whole huge chunk that comes instead of being more gradual.
So if you think about when you hire somebody.
Maybe it should be, say, one to three years is ten. But then three to six years is fifteen, so we shift that that five to ten now becomes six to ten where you get the four, so there's, you're, you're getting an extra week sooner than you would now, but the additional week afterwards goes a little bit later. So overall, it's a benefit for the employee, uh, but the, I'm getting four weeks happens a little bit later. And so you get the shift, but I don't know, I I don't know whether we want to do that to encourage temp, like staying for only within that, like three to six, whatever. Or whether because this jumps at five, you're now encouraging somebody to stay long-term. And so it's better this way without the, the ten or fifteen change.
I don't know, you can look at that two ways. They might come for a couple of years and then a sailboat goes along and they go, oh, I'm gonna jump on that now, where?
Which is pretty normal in the business world.
Right, right. But, and then you, you know, I I I think I, I feel like it's, in a sense, it's earned time. And and you get, you get into your job and and you get maybe even a little bit better at it and and there's, and there's you need a little bit more of a break as time goes on. I don't know.
So how how about this, my, I I'm gonna try to strike the middle ground and you can both shoot me down if you want. How about we leave? The, so everything stays the way the chart was, except we add one new row and we change one, one number. So instead of one to five, it would be one to three, and then we would add a four to five, which would then be that fifteen or the three-week mark, because jumping from two weeks to suddenly four weeks seems kinda silly.
Sold.
But that gives us the more graduated.
Yes.
Okay, so zero to one is still five.
Yeah.
And then one to three.
Would still be ten.
Okay.
And four through five would be the fifteen.
Okay, and then five would remain.
Yeah, everything else stays the same. That, what what do you think of that, Dee?
That sounds, that sounds fair. I mean, I like that one extra step.
Okay.
We're reasonable, Dave.
We're reasonable.
I think we're all fine today.
You also wanna get caught up in three hours on five days. It's just, yeah, good, awesome, next.
Let me change my notes here about it.
So did we resolve the part-time?
No. Do you know what any other towns do?
Salem did. Where I last worked, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Goxtown did as well.
Salem, Goxtown.
Did what?
How about our surrounding town?
I was gonna say Goxtown's a little bit bigger.
And Salem.
Salem's just tiny compared to us.
Oh, yeah, right.
I don't know, Marlo, to answer that question, I'd have to.
You know?
I'd have to ask.
I'd have to look at the wage study that they did a while back.
Who was that?
That's NHMA, they always do a wage study and they also include benefits in it.
Oh.
So, um, I'm not.
I know we wanna get this done, but can we, could we, could we look into that?
Why not? Yeah, sounds good. Okay, do you want, you wanna look at it and then we'll bring, go back and address this later?
Yeah, I think the part-time portion. We'll go back.
Yep, bye.
Okay, so we'll review, what towns do you want to think about?
Um, well.
Something similar to us.
Bosworth, Salisbury.
Yeah, I mean.
Even I suppose you could look at Hennecker a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we're, all of our surrounding towns are somewhat similar, even though they're not the same. So if we look at Bosworth and, uh, Hennecker, Hopkinton, Salisbury, Warner. I think that.
Is that a lot of work?
No.
Okay.
It's all in one spreadsheet.
Oh, oh, cause it's on the thingy thing. And when was that last updated?
They do it every year.
Oh, okay, so it's not like it's two years old.
I know, I know they were requesting fillouts, like a couple months ago, so I don't know if they've published it yet or not for this year, but we could at least look at last year's or request that.
It'd be on the NHMA website anyways that you can get to.
So I've got Warner, I've got Bosworth, Salisbury, Hennecker and Hopkinton.
Yeah, that's what we usually look at, those towns.
They might draw us Hennecker if you want, I mean.
Let's look at Bosworth and.
Yeah, we got Bosworth, right?
Said Bosworth, geez.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Boston, no.
Oh, Christ, they probably pay you for not showing up.
Well, that's, I think, what we get to next, sick leave.
Well, oh my God, people are gonna give me a big one.
All right, what are we doing next?
Okay, so.
I have to take my brain out of my business world.
I take back what I said before, uh, we have, the committee did add sick leave for part-time employees on the prorated work schedule. I think what needs to be, um, really better defined in both the vacation and the well, especially with the vacation as far as the number of weeks.
So, we could look at both that, sorry, Dave, we could look at both of that, like the.
So maybe we'll do the same, kind of a similar.
Yeah, look, 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 look to see.
Um, I'll note one other change that I'm seeing in the chart for, uh, vacation stuff. Is maximum accumulation was five days for all of them and they're suggesting fifteen. So from one ma- one week of maximum accumulation to three. So you, even though they're making five, they could never have more than three at one time to take.
And why do they do that?
Well, why, why do they, uh, limit the accumulation of vacation?
It was already limited, wasn't it?
It was limited at one and now it's three, which I think makes perfect sense, but.
I'm gonna just go with you on that.
Well, you know, but if you're getting five weeks worth of vacation at ten-plus years, you're, you're certainly not, like.
And how many sick days do you get to?
Use a week, you know, like every couple of weeks. It'd be a lot better to, you know, have one chunk or like, I'm taking a two or two and a half or whatever week vacation, so it's actually a vacation and
Right.
And, you know, you have something to save up for and use them.
You'd eliminate a lot of this with the paid days off.
Which is one of the reasons why I'm taking notes right now about, you know, number of holidays, vacation times and and so on, and now we're gonna get to sick, so I wanna add that in and and then see where that comes.
Meaning, meaning you would just restructure it as.
Blackstone.
Everybody gets this, you, you, you.
You have a schedule of
And it's not called sick and it's not called.
Tenure, I guess, and your.
It's just paid time.
It would be time on, you know.
Didn't we have that at one time and it got really confusing in this town?
It would've been way longer ago if you did.
Way long ago, wow, way long, that's me.
Longer than me, but but all the way back to two thousand and six, we never had it.
Okay, I just.
So it had to have been way before that.
Oh, I don't care, you know, I just knew it was like a headache.
I worked in one town that they, that's how they did it.
Yeah.
And you you've got, depending on your tenure, you've got X amount of days.
And what did you think of that system?
Did not include holidays. I mean, holidays, they, you know, holidays was a holiday.
So it was just sick and vacation time.
Yeah.
And it was a bucket.
Christ, we're getting to the point where we're working out for a year.
Yeah.
Probably is a holiday.
This was the same town that you could accumulate however you wanted. So when you left, you might get fifty thousand dollars, which a few people didn't.
Well, I heard stories from Roy about Concord, some people do that.
About where Roy Fang is? Oh, geez.
However, and that, you know, obviously, I'm not, I'm not saying that's the way to go, but I'm just, um.
Is that because they didn't cap it correctly?
No, it's because there's no, yeah, yes.
Cause there wasn't a cap.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, good, I think I was paying attention.
Yeah. So on the sick days, I draw your attention to the currently, we don't pay for sick time, accumulated sick time when someone leaves. The committee felt strongly that people should be paid for one-third of the sick days on record. Phil Mitchell and I have a joke about this because I disagree with that.
You disagree?
I do personally, but, um, and I'll tell you why, I mean, my, my method is, sick is is a, um, benefit, not a entitlement. And, but, the point that was made to me was that you're encouraging people not to take sick days, and that's the biggest problem that we can run into, not, I can't think of really, well, let me take that back. Uh, but people are sick conveniently.
Well, I have this one gentleman, when he gets a flu, it's on Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, how does that flu show up on Monday? Isn't that something?
Well, it's after the weekend, Marlo.
Right, right.
I had an employee that went to her grandmother's funeral like three or four times.
Oh, your grandma? Well, nowadays you can have more than one grandmother.
I mean, the party must have been a super spreader that 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 weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
So that's something, if, you know, in this policy that you might wanna consider.
You could, you know, depending on which side of the table.
I don't wanna sway you, but I've been very upfront with how I feel about that.
Right, and I, and I can, and and it all depends on what side of the table you're sitting on.
Right.
If you're sitting on the table, aside what you say, well, I come in with a sniffle and I don't, I work anyways and I, um, which is kinda like how we were brought up, and I know you shouldn't spread things, then you're like, I make the effort and then the next guy wakes up and he's got a little sniffle, and he doesn't commit.
Point they're making, and I, I understand it. They're saying that it's an incentive not to use sick days foolishly or frivolously.
No, I got it, but that's not the meaning behind a sick day.
That's where I am.
And and at the same time, though, the opposite side of that is you're encouraging people not to use sick time when they're actually sick. And you want them to stay home.
Oh, by, yes. Oh, I knew somebody would say that too, cause yes, you're right.
So it's like both sides of that, I would say, are.
Yeah, obviously, if someone's sick, you don't want them in the office.
Right, exactly.
But they could sit around their cruiser car and, you know, pull people over.
Well, from, from a dis- from a distance.
It'd be a little bit different, though, you know, if it were Russ or Dana, you know, you'd come in and start sneezing all over the office of people, you know.
That's part of the fun, Dave.
Yeah, really.
I don't know.
So.
So.
Well, I, I wish I could remember, it's been a long time since I was, I was on negotiation with the teachers. But I do know that's, you know, it, we had, I end up saying you can't take sick days, like in at certain sick days after a holiday, you know, they just happen to come along or, you know, before
Or they wouldn't get it.
Before school starts, you know, little things, but I can't remember how we, but I know that was a problem with and paying all the sick days at the end of a teacher's, um, thing can be very costly, man. So I do remember that.
How about if I also, as part of the review on the vacation, we look at it with these other towns?
Good idea. You are really cool.
I think we want, we wanna. We wanna be fair as fair can be, but not, not set such a precedence that Webster's only one paying this.
And I, and I'll get on my, my, my bandstand because, uh, you've heard me say, the employees are your biggest asset. And you want them, and I know this board is supportive of the employees, so I'm not saying that at all. But you wanna give them some perks.
Right. I agree. That's pretty good.
So looking at the, the sick portion here, the way that it's, and some of it has not changed in in support of their other changes, but, uh, the, the way that they've changed it, it's still you get hired, you have three days of sick time. After that, they're suggesting one sick day per month after, uh, so you would get twelve sick days per year that would go into your bank. The previous was twenty bank days maximum, and they're suggesting sixty bank days max. The previous was twenty bank days maximum, and they're suggesting sixty bank days maximum, which, that's two months' worth of sick time, at that point, you should be on some sort of disability. Uh, you know, short-term disability, I would, so I don't necessarily agree with the sixty, but it was twenty at sixty, uh, in their suggested edit. And then, the two, the two portions afterwards, and I'm gonna point out, because they're, they're actually related here, as long as we're dealing with a sick time, uh, is employees may use three days of sick leave per year for the purpose of providing in-home care to basically any dependents. And then, uh, up to four days for bereavement for any child-parent household. I would suggest that for both of those numbers, if we're actually having sick time like this, both of those numbers should be five days. Because three day, like, even with one kid, three days is probably gonna happen. And so, especially if you've got two kids, five days is, is much more reasonable in that. And if it's a bereavement thing, why only four days? That's not, that's not the full week. Let, let them have the week's worth of time to, to get themselves together.
Well, I think the committee recommended five days under bereavement leave.
Is bereavement leave coming on a sick time?
Oh, there's a, so, okay, yeah, so they've actually got, uh, oh, I see. So bereavement lea- we- leave, they actually changed, but there's another paragraph here that, in addition to bereavement leave, I thought it was bereavement leave, employees may use up to four days of sick leave for a death of said person.
You know, and I-
I would say they both should be five, if-
I, I just would rather not consider bereavement leave as part of the sick time, and so this paragraph probably, you know, if you have, if you lose someone in your immediate family, I think just leave it at five days.
Well, so they've got the bereavement leave, but they're saying if you leave them, you can also take sick time for another X number of days. So if, if that number were five, then they could have the week of bereavement leave, and then they could use sick for another week.
So you're saying change back to five? Yeah.
So they could have a total of two weeks' worth of quote bereavement time, only spending half, you know, half of that from the sick bank.
But not together.
It doesn't say not together? Uh, again, that would be a scheduling thing with-
Would that be two deaths?
Well, no, no. But, um, I think, I think the, if we're gonna keep sick time, I think making both of those five makes more sense.
But what are the, what do you folks think on that?
That's fine with me.
And so, their suggestion to go from twenty to sixty is the maximum bank days.
Are you, what are you looking at? Are you looking at the end?
Still, still the sick day thing.
Oh.
The, going from twenty to sixty is the maximum bank days, like-
That's a lot of, that's a big jump.
That's, that's two months. Well, no, that's not two months, that's a lot more than two months, because you're not counting weekend time. Sixty banked days, so-
Well, how many, what was the bank days before?
Twenty.
That's twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks, yeah, just was figuring, just figured it out fast enough.
So that's, yeah.
Holy, holy.
Or three months.
At one point, you used to be able to carry ninety days' sick time.
Really?
Yeah, at the end of the year, and, and, you know, that was what the bank was, and then they changed it to whatever it is now.
Yeah.
And, um-
For this town, you mean?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So what is it right now?
Twenty.
Twenty, yeah, I just asked you, I'm sorry.
And, and at the current rate of accrual, you're getting a little more than half of that in one year, so it's and this is where you also get to the, are we encouraging people to take sick time when they're not sick, because they're just quote losing their benefit if they haven't taken it?
And in the past, that happened.
Because it can't go to the bank.
In the past, that happened.
What was that?
In the past, that happened, we had an employee that, once they went over their ninety days that was accrued, and they knew that they had more in their bucket, they'd start, you know, not being here, because they, they said they were sick.
Oh.
When they weren't really sick, they just knew that they weren't gonna get that benefit when they-
If they, when they quit.
The employment, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So I'm gonna hit a pen crisis.
That's because I stole your other one.
Oh, that's- I, I think if it were to be increased, just because sixty days' worth is ridiculous, uh, for quote sick time, I think if it were to be increased, maybe thirty would be a sensible number instead of twenty. But now, we're getting to the point where, so we've got twelve days of s- of sick per year. We've got, um, vacation can go up to twenty-five days per year, there's twelve holidays. So I think, I think I really like the, the concept of, this is just a paid time off bank, and treat it like vacation. So it's a lower total, like, capped number. May- maybe that's capped at the, instead of fifteen days that they suggested for vacation, and maybe that's capped at thirty days. And rather than a third of payout for sick days at the end of employment, maybe it's, well, this is your paid time off, so you get it at your full rate. And, but the, the number is lower, uh, total. And I think that would, because if we're adding an extra week, but like, the, the payout would be about the same as kind of maxing your sick bank and your vacation bank, because your vacation bank's always gonna be full pay, and your sick bank is, now they're suggesting one-third pay. And so, even if you've got a lower number, but it's more than this, like, the payout's gonna be the same across it, and it's much simpler, and then there's no, like, faking sick and this and that, it's stay healthy, use your paid time day, paid off days.
You think, Dave, we should wait until we see the other towns and what they've done before we do any of this stuff? I mean, are we in a big rush to do it, or can we, you know, I'm sure you can get this stuff quickly.
Well, we're trying to get through, through our policy stuff.
Yeah, but I just, but with the money stuff, I'm just wondering if we should wait to see how the other towns-
I definitely wanna see what the other towns are doing.
Oh, okay.
But I think, based on what I'm seeing here, to, to me, it would make a lot more sense to just have one bucket of, this is paid time off, please use it.
Yeah.
Whether that's for your kid, whether that's for support, whether that's you're sick, whether you wanna go on vacation.
So you're saying vacation plus sick?
Yeah.
Equals paid days off?
This would be, and I would even be in favor of making the holidays be like, there's three mandatory holidays, and take the rest of the holidays and add it into that chunk. So, yeah, may- maybe somebody decides they wanna work a President's Day or something, but it's, it's, it's a day, and-
And then they can use it as a paid day somewhere else.
Correct.
Or they come in and they get paid for the day double time.
Well, no, because it wouldn't be a holiday. You know, I, I'm assuming, because we haven't had that as a holiday in the past, that's why I used that example.
We, with that, though, with the police, we get into a little situation. If you recall.
Should they be cut off as their own island?
Well, I've often- Oh, yeah, because they're trying to find part-time to-
Remember, they, we had this situation where there wasn't coverage on Thanksgiving, and, and, um, and so the policy for that was changed.
Well, right, and, but so, like, I, that's why I say, you know, there should be a few holidays, but maybe not twelve. And one of those, those holidays is a personal holiday anyway, it's not an actual listed holiday. So maybe the holidays would be, for example, like, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas.
Well, I was gonna have Russ come in on Christmas.
You know, so, like, the, you know, if we're using, I mean, not saying those are it, because I'm not looking at the list right now, but, like-
Oh, that sounds about right.
Something of that sort of concept, where like, yeah, ev- everyone wants to go, you know, do something then, but sure, some people like to go out and do cookouts on Memorial Day or something like that. But not everybody goes and does that, or they're doing it in the evening, not in during the day, or whatever, so it's gonna be different for everybody, just like a lot of other of the holidays would be. And so, I'm in favor of giving the employee a lot more flexibility in that, while also allowing scheduling a lot more flexibility to, to handle it and deal with it.
You mean, just in case they wake up and they're like, screw the day? Right?
Well, I mean, the other, the other part of it, and you said this a little while ago, if someone's sick, but they don't wanna, you know, use a day, they don't.
But, you know-
So what would that all, so what, what number would we come up with if we just did, here's your bucket of days off?
Well, for the town administrator, it'd be a hundred days.
Well, get near that, for Christ's sakes, oh my god.
I was, I was gonna, you know, that's another-
It's a different way to look at it.
When I look at the other towns, let's see what their things, and then, I, I do think you definitely need some holidays, the ones that, you know, the, the major holidays.
Yes.
And then, and you don't wanna take away from your current staff what they have to convert it to days. Let me work on it, and I'll see if I can come up with some innovative way to-
When we were doing payroll in-house, I always was here on New Year's Day, always, because I had to do W-two's and close out the-
Is that why they were so bad, because you had been to the party?
I don't know, nobody ever complained, but I always wore New Year's day. That's when payroll was in-house, you know, I don't have to do that, because payrolls aren't in-house.
Yeah.
But we paid for that.
So if, maybe if you think that's a good idea, I'd be glad to-
I'd, I'd like to see what the other towns are, are doing and what those numbers are.
Well, because right here, we're making some pretty hefty decisions for, where we might not even be a part of this, and I don't wanna be looked at.
And I'm not saying, like, we go change it to, to this, I'm saying, at, once we have those numbers, I think we look at, what would it look like if we did it as a single pool? Take that and show that suggestion back to the committee, um, see what they think, and then, maybe once we get all of this back together, maybe we make the decision, maybe we hold a public hearing and ask what people think about two options.
Well, because, because, like, what, what I would feel like, if somebody said to me, well, what, when you're voting on something like this, you're trying to do the best for the town and your people. Like you said, without you guys, we know what can happen around here, so.
Yeah.
But also, I don't, the, the, you know, because this is government, it is different than a lot of people are used to, too. Or people that are government are used to this, so it, it, to me, there's here and there's here. And, and we're trying to be closer to the government side and be fair to what's our, they're not competition, but your pool, your labor pool market that you're fighting to keep, to keep, be competitive. So I could, I would be able to say, well, this town, this town, this town, this town does it this way, so we compromise to here. And then, then they don't, then people wouldn't say, well, why are you giving, or, you didn't give us enough.
Yeah, I mean, and I think-
Does that make sense?
And employees, I think our employees are very cognizant of what it costs the taxpayers for things. And-
But we have to answer to them in a sense, right.
And you do, and, um-
To both.
So you, you do need some sort of, um, plan that shows what you considered and why you made that decision.
Yeah, th- this is, this is the balance of, of course, if you're trying to be just taxpayer savvy, well, we don't wanna pay anybody anything, and at the same time, we, we have services and employees, and we wanna make sure that they're actually good at what they do.
Well, yeah, exactly.
You have to pay them.
That's right.
So the, finding that middle ground is what we're trying to do.
Or we don't wanna be, you know, because, because my, like I said, my brain has me not talking to you guys, I'm like, geez, you know, back or down, kids, but, that's not-
Would you like an application?
Yeah. I'll work with Wendy. Yeah, right. So-
I know what you're saying.
Yes. That's why it makes it. That's why at least we know the other towns, I can, I can justify it in my mind a little bit better.
Why don't we revisit that?
Not that we want to say hey, oh.
In a week, maybe?
Yeah, when you get some information from everybody else.
Yeah.
Now we're family leave, maternity leave, is there any places in here, there's not time for employees off?
Yeah, and, and, and those, I mean, the family and medical leave, that's, you know, federal law.
Yeah, I mean, you can't say much about that, yeah.
So the next, um, really, the next section is about the health and dental insurance. We will find out about if NHMA or the laws have changed as far as allowing part-time people to go on the health insurance, Wendy has a very good point.
Yeah.
So, um, we actually, we removed the statement in there about all existing employees as of four twenty-two fifteen will continue to receive a hundred percent paid insurance, although we still have Phil Mitchell that, um, is now paid a hundred percent, now that he's on a two fam- two per, sorry, I'm on camera. Anyway, it's changed. So I guess I need to find out from NHMA what the allowance is on.
Yeah, really, the only, the only change that's really here, eh, for operating procedures that we're, we're adding dental, uh, which
Right.
we, we did, um, we decided to do, and so this just puts it in the document. And any line, for example, that's stating existing employees as a blah, is, really shouldn't be in a document like this, because either they're signing on to the new personnel policy and getting its benefits, or they're staying with their old one and they're not. There's no, like, mixing and matching between policies, and there shouldn't be, so you, you either sign on with one, or you stay with the other one. If allowed. Which, most places don't allow that, but in certain portions of contracts, you get into funny stuff with that, so.
Apparently, they found a typo, workdays.
Looks like it.
Yes. That has been picked up.
Absolutely. Sorry, you gotta go to more red, right?
Yeah.
Okay, they had to volunteer to that, that's fine.
Yeah, volunteer to that. Sexual harassment policy.
Aw, you can't do the volunteers?
No. No.
Oh, sometimes the things we have to put in writing, huh? Oh, there's the volunteer. It's awful.
A, a quick comment on the, the, page twenty-three of the typo that was getting fixed, with the quotation having a space after it. I'll just say that there's a, uh, they're using a directional quote, and there aren't any others in the document. So either all the du- the quotes should be directional towards the, the quote, or they should all be the standard hash marks like was being removed. Just a formatting thing.
That's it, Dana?
Yep. Message received. Um, I think the next is going up to page thirty. And we added that, in some cases, employees use their personal cell phones to log into a computer system for the town. The next paragraph, it's regarding the confidentiality of some items on police departments' computers. The same with- The same with the workplace searches. Let's see here.
So what, let me ask quickly about the definition here. All communication conducted with town resources and community email and internet services are subject to monitoring and review by the town at any time. What is the definition of the town? Is that us directing an investigation? Is that you having a suspicion or a complaint? Or is that a citizen saying, I wanna see this? But it may not fall under ninety-one A.
Right, it wouldn't be a citizen in, in the way I would, maybe there's a better way to, to put it, but I think it would be. Anything that were to happen to that, if, if I became aware of something that really should be looked at, I'm gonna come to the board anyway. So it would really be you.
Page was that, Dave? I gotta, I gotta.
That's the middle of thirty, computers, email, and internet usage.
Oh, yeah.
Which then leads into workplace searches, which is, it's the same wording. The town reserves the right to search any employee's office, desk, files, physical or electronic locker, or any other area or article on our premises, except the police department due to protected confidentiality. So maybe.
I have a, I mean, in that one, Wendy and I were talking about that earlier. And I think that's a good question for legal, but going into someone's purse or handbag, who would do that? You know, it's, it's kind of like, I wouldn't wanna do that.
No, and it seems so ridiculous.
You know, a bigger town in my, or a city, it might be.
The police, the department, maybe.
Yeah, I could, I could see requesting that the police do it.
Yeah.
But I can't see, like.
Yeah, I don't think town employees should do that at all.
One of us. Yeah.
Well, that could put the town at li- at liability, yeah.
I would think, yeah.
I mean, I could see that the town could, could for reason request that the police search.
Yeah, request, right.
Yeah.
But not like, hey Dana, go check Wendy's purse.
I think it needs to be.
It's in the car. I don't even bring it in.
It needs to be refined, I guess, is really what I'm saying.
I look at it, it's gonna have to be refined very much.
And like, I can understand what, ha- having worked at, you know, retail and stuff like that, I can understand, like, these are common things to be in employee personnel policies. But at the same time, we're, the, the way that it works and the way that it would typically be worded there is like, the store manager may, or the, the current manager may, and.
I think this says, say, the police.
Well, but to say that the police may just do the search isn't really what we want either. We would want it to be the police at the direction of the select board or, or, you know, town administrator due to.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Not that the police are gonna waste their time to just come and check Wendy's purse every day, but, you know.
No, but I, I think, I think I look at this, if we've gotten to that point.
Yeah, there's a problem.
There's a problem.
Right.
Like, like, maybe a big one, or, but how, what makes you nervous is, is the new town administrator will spring. Right? You know, I mean, it, it mean.
Because not everyone's necessarily gonna be as reasonable as we are right now, trying to go through these policies.
That's right, that's what.
I thought it was an odd, you know.
That's scary to me, actually, kinda knowing what.
My wife worked at a school and they could not bring their purses and pocketbooks into the work area.
Really?
No, they would, they would, um, and I may have this screwed up, but I think the supervisor would lock them, would lock them up, and when you were ready to go, they'd have to get them for you.
What if you, hmm, that's a little weird on the, kind of them side. Whatever you need, that.
A lot of retail places tell you, either don't bring it, or it's gonna be searched when you come in and searched when you leave to make sure they're the same.
I mean, I'm sure maybe if you said, gee, can I keep my Kleenex or, or something like that.
Interesting, though.
I don't understand those things. I'm a guy and I don't have that.
I usually leave my pocketbook in the car.
Well, you know, I, I'm commonly taking a laptop bag with me, same, same thing.
Yeah.
I bring eight spades with me. No, but I throw a lot of crap. I never used to, I used to have a whole backpack.
You know, I, on the, in the one sense, you wanna be, you wanna have in the policy that it's allowable that it happens because there are going to be situations that hopefully we never encounter in this town where that would be needed. And if it's not in the policy, then there's a lawsuit if you need, if you try to do it.
Yeah, you, we have to be ahead of ourselves.
So we could word it something like, um, that the town reserves the right for just cause to require search of these things by the police department or whoever we choose to.
You better hurry up, write that down.
Yeah.
So, so.
Sounds good.
So yes, I, I, I think we, I think it's an important clause and it's, it, it has existed and it, it will and should exist. And especially if, you know, for example, except the police department due to protected confidentiality, well, if we're requesting that the police do it, that exception doesn't need to be there, because it would be, well, we expect that the chief of police will go do the investigation and do the right thing.
And do it in confidentiality anyway, that's the way they work.
Because he would have to as part of the police and, and their procedures.
Right, exactly.
So I think, I think if this is worded better, uh, we can avoid the exception portion uh, and also protect our employees' privacy a bit more than this allows for. And that's privacy advocate, I like that. So that's my comment there.
Sticking to it.
I mean, you're, feel free to tell me anything else, cause it's not me.
No, you think things through a little different than I do, so I would, I, no, I agree with everybody, I just, that doesn't, I don't. It's probably why you get yourself in trouble sometimes.
So you're saying that you really don't like this?
No, 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 I, I look at it as, I look at it as, go ahead. I know, I, I always look at this like I got nothing to hide, but it doesn't mean that you can't be working with somebody that might have a, something against you and decide to like harass you that way. You wouldn't want that either.
I look at it the same way too, but I don't want it as a, and I don't think this would happen, but it shouldn't be that I'm just saying, you know.
Right.
Wendy, I'm gonna look through your pocketbook.
That's right, that's right. And you wouldn't think that would ever happen, but that could happen, so that's why, yeah. No, I think the word is just fine.
Places don't have that happen.
That's the thing, we have to think.
No, no, I'm agreeing, I'm just saying.
No, but you don't ever want some of this stuff to happen, but we all know, you know, everybody says, oh, that would never happen here, oh, well, it could.
Oh, yes, no, for sure.
So we gotta be ahead of ourselves.
That's right. I think we're doing a good job.
The le- next thing is thirty-two of the layoff. If there's a layoff and the job, then things change, um, that's saying that the town would offer the job first to the person that was laid off, and I think it needs to have some sort of time put in there.
Oh, boy.
You mean seventeen-month absence doesn't do it?
I, I would agree that a, a time period would make sense.
Like within a year?
Yeah, like a year. I was actually thinking about a year, so.
This was, yeah.
And I mean, it makes perfect sense if, if we lay them off because of funding from, you know, a budget one year and the next year there's budget, and then it makes sense.
Do you, if you offer it to them, you have to offer it to them and have them back. You can't move on from somebody by laying them off within a year, is what we're kinda saying, right?
Well, layoffs shouldn't be to move on. If, if you need to move on, you should fire them or let them go for some reason.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're, we're talking about.
Orange and apples.
You go to the, you know, the town meeting, decides to cut the budget and you have to lay someone off, so, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, that can happen.
Which is probably where this came from.
Gotcha.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So yes, I, I would agree that that's.
So one year, that sounds good.
That's a good change and, but I, I, yeah, I think, I think a year period would make sense.
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah, right, I do too.
And then obviously the housekeeping stuff, get your names right, maybe.
Next.
All right, well, that covers that. Looks like we've gone through the whole thing.
Yeah, um, if I, I just wanna go through my action items here, so I'm going to be.
Is this for me?
To sign.
Oh.
Well, I don't think you have a paycheck on that.
All right, wake me up, man.
The five towns that we, that we, uh, pinpointed, we discussed to, to look at that, to find out about vacation, sick, and, um, and also maybe some sort of methodology if you decided to change it to a paid days off system. What else was I going to do?
Well, you gotta check those towns for numerous things.
Yeah, you wound up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, the insurance, yeah.
All the numerous things.
Yes. I could write numerous D and then tomorrow I'd be there, what?
That's, yeah. So what do I say? Doing that all the time. What'd I say? Oh, my God, and if I repeat myself, ignore the second repeat, will you?
I didn't think it would happen to me, but it did, oh, boy. You know, you go grab the phone and all of a sudden, you don't remember who you're calling.
That's real time, and then you just, you're hoping they start talking, so then you can remember why and who you've called.
Recognize your voice, exactly.
Or my mom literally asks the same question in three different ways, and I always swear to God, I said, are you testing that I'm gonna give the same answer? Especially on the whole, through all this medical stuff, she'll ask it, I'm like, Mom, they've answered that and you can ask it ten more times and they're gonna say the same thing.
She's just trying to have you get a better answer.
Oh, yeah.
Work on that, Marlo. Anything else that I should be doing? And when would you like to meet again on this issue?
On what issue? Getting all this stuff?
Yeah.
Right away, man.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah.
I, I guess.
Ooh, you're a tough D.
Probably sooner than later, so I don't forget what we just saw.
That's your job.
Yeah, um, I mean, we, we meet on Monday normally, so I guess, I, I would suggest that see what you can find out and let us know the process or progress of finding out on Monday.
Okay, on Monday, okay.
And if you know it all, then we'll go, then we can schedule something on Monday. And if you don't, then we can look at when we'll be able to schedule it.
That sounds good to me. But yeah, sooner the better, like, cause we're fresh, so we can get it behind us.
Yeah. Well, it's been, it'll be nice to get it done.
Can I still put, take this on? Of course I can.
I wouldn't know, because that's evidence.
That's right, evidence.
We might have to search your pocketbook.
You beat me to the punch, Dana.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Okay.
During my spare time, I can't sleep.
You gotta make the motion.
I make the motion to adjourn.
What?
I was getting there, okay?
I was trying to help you.
A five oh two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hit recording.
Everybody can go home. That's why he's waiting, he's ready to go home.